Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our June televised Board of Education meeting. And I'd ask everybody to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening and welcome. And Mrs. DePaulitano, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Here.
Mr. Shea could not make it.
Here.
Here.
Mrs. Glidden had a family emergency and cannot be here tonight.
Here.
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 Thank you so much. I don't believe we have, do we have student board reps? I mean, we're kind of done with that, yeah. I'm impressed that we have as many in the audience tonight, being that school's out, so I'm excited about that. So with that, presentation of awards, Dr. Menzo?
Okay. Tonight, we are recognizing several students in our district. We're going to start first with our students who participated in the Capstone project this year at the middle school. I know we have some students who are, might be coming in as I'm talking.
Sure.
But we wanted to recognize them because it was a pilot program, and due to the success of their hard work, we are now, as you all know, and you approved as a board, moving it into a formalized part of our curriculum, three through eight. So grades three through eight next year, students will be participating in the Makerspace curriculum opportunity that our students participated this year in at both Moran and Dag Middle School. What I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to the two people who really deserve all the credit, and I know that they're embarrassed and probably going to be ready to not be happy with me, but it's okay. I'm allowed to do that. So I'm going to turn this over to, oh, gosh, now I'm going to have to say her last name, Ms. Leslie Pacelli-Cupta and Ms. Lori Esposito, who are the two facilitators of this opportunity this year. And I'd like to have them come up, and then we're going to recognize the students, but I wanted them to share a little bit about the program and about the experience.
No, I really do, I just, I just basically want to thank the board and Dr. I'm not sure if I can do this. Okay. This way, the audience. See, this is what you have to do, okay? We do that with our students. So I just wanted to thank the board and Dr. Menzo for this amazing opportunity of growth. It's very rare in our field as educators to be able to step out of the classroom and to learn something new. I was really a part of an amazing team of teachers and educators, Rob Covey and Kate O'Donnell and my counterpart, Leslie Pacella-Cupta, as we wrote and developed this Makers Ed curriculum, the Wallingford 3D Learning Program. It was amazing experience, and I do appreciate this opportunity that you've been giving me.
I'd like to, you know, say the same sentiments about thanking you for that chance. It is very rare, and I believe that it was, it really helped us develop as professionals going out and doing things that we normally don't do, and giving us a chance to grow and, and see a whole different perspective of the education.
Wait, they're not this quiet in the classroom, are they, kids? Guys, are they this quiet? No, they're not this quiet, right? So I do want to say for those, again, that are watching, we're very fortunate because these two educators, what they're alluding to is the experience that they were the middle school innovation team this year. So they were on a year sabbatical from the classroom, during which time they were charged with writing a curriculum that we are happy to move forward with in its marketing, and we actually have just confirmed trademarking, copyrighting, and licensing to another vendor. I can't say officially just yet, or officially on TV, but we do have a national vendor who is going to be selling the curriculum across the country, and we believe there's a large sale looming ahead of us, which will be good for a very large district. And there'll be funds that will be able to be filtered back into the school system to support programming like Makerspace Curriculum. This is really a first venture for Wallingford, and actually, to be honest, it's a first venture in Connecticut, if not the country where a school district is having a partnership with a company licensing educational resources. Usually companies hire teachers and they own everything. This is actually a mutual partnership because of the hard work of our teachers, creating their curriculum and then licensing it. So we own the copyright, we own the trademark, but we're licensing it to leverage their ability to sell it across the nation and internationally. So we're very excited by that opportunity, and we're looking to hopefully subsidize the budget in a little way over the next few years with this opportunity. But tonight really is about beyond recognizing these two educators, recognizing the students. We have students from a variety of programs here tonight, so we'll start with identifying, with recognizing the students. And if I could have the students, and this goes for anyone that we're recognizing this evening, if you could kind of stay up here with your friends and your peers, so we can make sure that we give you ample recognition on TV, and we might ask you a few questions, too. So we'll start off, because I get to have the microphone at that point. So we'll start off with the Dag Hammersheld students.
Lindsay Brockett, she's not here tonight. Olivia Eves, sorry, she's not here as well. Jared Kurt. Amelia Roberts. Shay Solomon. Evan Smith. He's not present. Sean Fermentis. Riley Sullivan. And Yaseen Zaim Sassi. Andrew Carey. Tyler Hines. Caitlin Montanino. William Miller. Newman Said. Clarissa Minowag. Nate Saracel. And then students who also participated but are not present this evening. We have Jo Ammarone. Nick Ionon, Dylan Hennessy. Shane Kaplan. Emily Jockel. Rachel Hill. Melanie Medina.
All right, quickly, who's going to share a little bit? Now, you got excellent, excellent. Go for it. Prepared, nice, nice job.
Good evening. My name is Shay Solomon, a soon-to-be eighth grader at Dag Hammersheld Middle School. This year, I enjoyed being a part of the Pilot Capstone program at Dag. It was a privilege to get to know and learn from the program before the rest of my classmates will. During the course of this year, I formed a better understanding of brainstorming and designing, as I designed, as I created design products out of cardboard and other ordinary materials. Personally, I tend to stay inside the box, but with the help from my teacher, Ms. Esposito, and my fellow Capstone classmates, I stepped out of my comfort zone and took my creativity to the next level. This year, I had the opportunity to experience things I never would have if not I've been for this program. Along with Moran's Capstone group, we were given the rare opportunity to visit the IBM Research Center, where we met Watson, a question-answer computer system capable of answering complex questions, as well as many researchers that are working on innovative technology. It was a truly incredible experience, in which I took a lot from about design, about the design process. Along with this, I learned about laser surgery, and how it's created from the founder himself, software design, and how it is developed, and many other things, all of which changed my perspective on the future of technology. The experience made me reflect steps I will take about my Capstone project, or any design ideas and projects I may work in the future. I'm excited to see what the Makerspace and Capstone course has to offer next year, and all the great things I will accomplish. I think the skills I have learned from this program will help me better brainstorm and identify problems and solutions, create and develop design solutions, and communicate and share my ideas. Thank you for this opportunity educationally.
Notes. True. Big debate while we were texting on our group chat. And I'm not sure who won. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Fermentis. I'm an incoming eighth grader at Dag Hammersheld Middle School, and I'm here tonight to talk about what I learned in Capstone, which is a really big topic, but it can be summed up into these three words. And if there's anything I want you to take away tonight, it would be these three words: dream, design, and do. One word we, we kept on going back on during the, during the class was the word innovation. New method, new ideas, new products. Innovations were dreamt of, were designed, and were presented to the public. Some innovations we now use in our daily life. Example number one: The iPhone would not exist if it was not dreamt, if it was not designed, and if it was not presented to the public. Therefore, Capstone is a really great course because it teaches you how to dream, how to design, and how to do. We learned how to dream this year by brainstorming ideas, world issues. We came up with problems in education, terrorism, medical problems, and we found problems in all of these big labels in the world today. After that, we had to collaborate, and we needed to research in order to find a solution. Because when you collaborate, you're brainstorming, and who knows, one person's idea and your idea, and that might be the final solution. When you research on the internet, you need to know more background information about the problem. That's how we learned how to dream. We learned how to design by identifying and creating design solutions through the brainstorming process. Sometimes, we needed to work with certain materials in limited time. We learned about that when we had a cardboard challenge this year, where we needed to make something out of cardboard. I made a cardboard backpack. It broke, but it was good. And I remember I needed to keep trying and trying, because all I had was cardboard to work with and some hot glue, I guess. But I noticed that your first idea may not always be the idea that actually works. Sometimes, you need to keep trying and trying again. The light bulb was not created on the first try. That's how I learned about design. And finally, we learned about do. Presentation skills, eye contact, appropriate tone and voice, hold the microphone correctly, speak into the microphone, presentation skills. So if you're wondering if the Wallingford Board of Education is really making a right move for our school district, I say yes, they are. Because our students, the students, students like us and students in the district need to learn how to dream, how to design, and how to do. Because in this course, we learned how to brainstorm, we learned about communication, we learned how to exceed our thoughts, exceed our imagination, and embrace limitation with cardboard. So I'd like to thank Ms. Esposito for teaching us this year. She did a really good job. She's a really great teacher. And I'd like to take, thank Dr. Menzo as well for opening the doors, not, not only to us, but next year to our whole school, our whole district. Thank you. Would anyone?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew Carey, and next year I'll be going into eighth grade at Moran. In Capstone this year, we've learned a lot, and it was a class like no other, where it was really a step towards individualized learning. Everything we did in our Makerspace was by ourselves with the influence under our teachers, which helped a lot, a teacher like no other, Ms. Cupta. I really loved this year for the main reason alone, that it embraced me to collaborate with my other students, along with working with them. It was a real pleasure to be in Capstone, and it brought me open, it brought open a lot of opportunities, such as IBM, and much more. I really thank Dr. Menzo a lot for opening this. Thank you.
All right. Well, I have to say, obviously, you know, you guys make us so proud, and we would not have been able to move forward if we didn't have such exceptional students involved in this pilot. You're a very heterogeneous group in terms of your interests, your understandings, the directions from which you come at solving a problem, and that mix of personality, as well of different abilities in terms of art, as well as sports, and, and just understandings of different things, really demonstrated how a class like this can really raise everybody up, and I think that's what we saw. So thank you so much for that. Next year, I know that this class, everybody's probably wondering, they're kind of ahead of the curve for the eighth graders, so we will be having some special opportunities to kind of push you forward, because you'll be presenting your, your Capstone at some point next year. And we look forward to that. And you always have, we always have our trip to IBM, which was a blast, and you always have, obviously, me as a supporter of what you're doing, and you won't get rid of us as we move forward next year. We'll be definitely part of the process. So again, thank you. And I'd like to thank the parents of these students, too, because when we met in Hubcap in September, we said, let's just, you're going to take a chance with us. You're going to take us, we're going to take you on a journey. We don't know exactly where we're going, but we promise it'll be good for your children. And I just want to say thank you to the parents for their support, the Board of Ed for their support, and again, to our two teachers. So congratulations. Can't wait to see what happens next year. Thank you so much. Yeah, they're fantastic. So we go from one amazing group of students to another amazing group of students, which is good, because we have no shortage of that, and that's a positive thing in Wallingford. At this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Karen Ripa, who will share with us some exciting news about students who really excelled this year in the Invention Convention. And we had some first-of-its-kind opportunities. So again, Ms. Karen Ripa, our step teacher at the elementary level, so.
Thank you. Make me follow that. Thanks a lot. Congratulations, Capstone students. That sounds awesome. And kind of right on the heels of what I'm going to talk about. And it's also innovation. And Mr. Bukakis is also wishing that he could be here, and he's kind of texting me at the same time. Got tied up in family business. We have a small group with us today, four students who had an amazing experience this May. I'm going to take you back a little bit to their history. As you know, we've been running the Invention Convention for several years now, and it starts with a part of my class that my students have to engage in the Invention Convention as part of their class lessons, but it is open to all students in grades three through eight, and lots of students take part in it. And then, so we participate first in a local convention, and from that local convention, we then go to the state convention. And this year, for the very first time, the dream of Helen Charaf, who is at the, the head of the state Invention Convention, her dream has always been to have a national Invention Convention, which included states from across the nation, and that became a reality this year. And we were very fortunate to participate and send students from Wallingford. I'm going to take you back a little bit before we introduce the students who took place, because we had some, these students have quite a history with the Invention Convention, these four remarkable students. I have to put my glasses on. These four students, Kaylee, Drew, Pranav, and Audrey, have quite a history, and it took, it was a journey for them to get to the national level. So each one of them were state finalists, or were finalists at the local convention. Not only were they finalists at the local convention, they also were special award recipients. Drew won the top award for the Firefighters Award for Safety, and Kaylee won the second-place award for the Firefighters Award for Safety. The heiress Innovation Award went to Pranav for innovation, for his concussion mouthguard award. Kaylee also won an heiress ribbon award for innovation, for her firearm, fire prevention invention. Drew won the heiress Technology Top Award for her invention. When going to the state level, Audrey brought in four awards at the state level. Drew, three awards. Kaylee, two awards. Pranav, two awards. These students earned their ticket to go to Washington, DC in May, and it is with such pride that I would like to introduce them to you today, so they can share what they created for their inventions. So Audrey Larson, eighth grade at Dag Hammersheld. Drew Biller, fifth grade. Honville. We have Kaylee McGovern. Fourth grade at Parker Farms. Of course, they're all moving up now. And Pranav Perik, third grade at Rock Hill. I should mention that each one of these, the, the invention process is a complete problem-solving process, much like what the Capstone process is. Identify a problem, come up with a solution, and work through that solution through lots of hard work. It involves searching for, doing patent searches, making sure that no one has created this invention before, and then working through a solution to the problem. And that involves creating an actual working prototype, testing it, making sure that it works, retesting, coming up with your results, and then creating a presentation board, and then working on the oral presentation, presenting it at your local convention, at your state convention, and then at the national convention. Nationals was tough. They were judged by grade, so we didn't have any winners at Nationals, because there were about forty kids in each grade, and they picked a first, a second, and a third. But we all learned a lot. I think I learned the most about what we need to do to beef up our Invention Convention. But we had a magnificent time. I'm incredibly proud of these young people. I'd like them to take just a minute to tell you what they did, because all of their inventions have something to do with health and safety.
Hi, my name is Audrey Larson, and I'm going into eighth grade at Dag Hammersheld Middle School. My invention was SEAT, which is an acronym for Safe Emergency Assistive Technology, and it was a clip-on to crutches, so that when you get fatigue and aches and pains, you can fold it out, and you have yourself a seat for emergencies, and you don't need a wall to use it, and it clips onto standard crutches. And I just want to thank Ms. Ripa, because she's done so much for the Invention Convention program. And I'd also like to thank my step and Invention Convention teacher, Mr. Bukakis, who couldn't make it here tonight, who's helped me all the way through the process, and has sat through some long award dinners for me. I'd like to thank him for everything he's done to get me to Nationals, and I'd like to say congratulations to all my friends on everything they've done.
Hi, my name's Drew Biller, and I'm going into sixth grade at Dag Hammersheld Middle School. I hope I said that right. I invented the firefighting buddy. So did you know that one kid a day, and three, one kid a day dies in a fire and three hundred gets seriously injured? That's way too many. So my invention is to bring the numbers down. So how it works is it has Bluetooth connection to all the smoke detectors in the house, so that when the fire alarm goes off, so does your bear. It gives step-by-step directions in your parent's voice to get the child out of the house safely. And I'd really like to thank Mrs. Ripa for helping me in the Invention Convention and believing in me.
Hi, I'm Kaylee McGovern, and I'm going into fifth grade at Parker Farms School, and I created, or designed the firearm 2000. It's a, it's hooked up to all, to the smoke detectors in your house with Bluetooth, so they vibrate when your smoke detector goes off, in case you don't hear it. And I'd also like to thank Ms. Ripa for helping me through the process of designing it.
Hi, my name is Pranav Perik, and I'm going into fourth grade at Rock Hill Elementary School, and I invented the concussion-catching mouthguard, which is a mouthguard that not only protects your teeth, as all mouthguards do, your teeth, as all mouthguards do, but also detects impact to the head. When a player gets a forceful impact to the head, he or she will hear a sound and feel a sound. The coach will also get a message by Bluetooth signal on his or her smart device. The player will hear a sound from an alarm and feel a sound from a vibrator. Then, the coach and the player can decide if the player should go back in, or should stay out, or should get checked by a medical, medic.
As you can see, I have lots to be proud of in these four individuals, as I was in all of the students who invented. So, all you Capstone folks, the Invention Convention goes up to eighth grade, so if you've got those great innovative ideas, I want to see you on my Invention floor. I also wanted to mention that one of our young inventors here is taking her invention all the way through the patent process, and that's Kaylee, Drew, sorry, looking at Kaylee, but meaning Drew. So, sometimes it pays off. And congratulations again, and thank you, Dr. Menzo and the board, for recognizing these fine, young inventors.
You guys are amazing. Thank you very much, Ms. Ripa. Oh, if you could just, there's one for you, Mr. Bukakis. So, thank you so much. Obviously, we have so many students to be proud of this evening for their hard work and their talent and the creativity that's being fostered by our staff and nurtured at home by their parents. So, thank you so much for that. I don't know if you want to comment on the students at this time?
Thanks for the opportunity. On behalf of the Board of Education, you know, this is so heartwarming. This is why we do what we do. Look at the heads nodding. I just want to thank the teachers, the administration, the parents, and the students for sharing in our vision for creativity, innovation, and individualized learning in our district. And we're taking leaps and bounds in that direction in how we educate our students. And you guys are in on the ride with us. And we promote it through the vision of Dr. Menzo and his staff, but it's you guys that really embrace it and make it a living, breathing entity, and make it a reality. So, I thank everybody in this room, and all the faculty, the students, and the parents that participate and willingly go into this process of innovation and learning in innovative style, when you're really not sure what it's all about, but you're willing to take the risk, because you trust this man and his staff. So, I thank you on behalf of Board of Ed for sharing our vision. Thank you. You should be so proud of your students. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to actually call up Mr. Chapel, if you don't mind coming up. We are here tonight to recognize three adults in our community who were helpful in orchestrating walks to help with ending or raising funds to help end diabetes. And I want him to just explain a little bit about this, and then I have some certificates of appreciation to distribute.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for taking the time or allowing the time. I happen to be the volunteer board president for JDRF, formerly known as Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation. And I just, I want to thank Dr. Menzo and the school staff involved for allowing us to do a school walk where over $5,000 has been raised within district. JDRF is the global leader in funding of type 1 diabetes research. And to give you a real close snapshot, type 1 diabetes is an autoimmune disorder with no cure. And although there are treatments, the treatments, or the impact on a family is pretty robust, I think we can all agree. With that, I'd just like to introduce Jennifer Pratt from JDRF, the development manager.
Thank you. We were fortunate enough this year to partner with three Wallingford schools through our Kids Walk program. And JDRF was founded in 1970 by a group of parents who believed that small groups of people can do really big things. And the three schools in Wallingford definitely proved that this year. As Jonathan mentioned, the total amount raised by these students was just under, like, $30, $5,000. And the Kids Walk program is an opportunity for JDRF to partner with the schools and educate the students about type 1 diabetes, what it is, how it's treated, what the symptoms are, how it's different from type 2 diabetes, and to empower the students to make a difference in their own communities. The funds that were raised support type 1 research, and then 10% of the funds raised also go back to the individual schools. And we were lucky enough to work with Lauren Young, who is the school nurse at Parker Farms, and to work with Isabella and Geraldine Purno. Geraldine is a member of the Yalesville Highland PTA, and she brought the idea to the PTA, so we were actually able to work with both Highland and Yalesville. It was a wonderful opportunity and partnership that I hope to see continuing and grow as we move forward. And we were really happy to be able to acknowledge the people who helped bring us into the district.
I have certificates for them, but I don't think, unfortunately, they're here. So, we'll get these to them, but we want to say thank you to also your willingness to really approach our school for this opportunity. It's always important to have our students engage in noteworthy causes and to really be able to understand some things that either their siblings or relatives might be experiencing, or their peers in class, and this was a great way to do that. So, we appreciated not just the walk, which was great, but also the educational component that you were able to provide to our students. So, thank you so very much. We appreciate it. All right, last, but certainly not least, and he's probably getting antsy back there, because he's not usually sitting still, I'm sure. So, I would like, actually, Mr. Corso, do you want to join us? Come on up. We're very fortunate, because we have a student from Lyman Hall High School who reached All-American Status in the Emerging Elite Division of 800-Meter Championship recently. His name is John Gill. John, could you come on up? So, he went to the national competition, and again, it's the Emerging Elite Division of 800-meter. Could you explain a little bit about that for us?
Sure. For the Andrew Meters, that's a track event. It's basically just two laps around the track, and I did it in a school record of 152.57.
So, just merely two laps around the track?
Basically sprinting, yes.
Just simple stuff?
Yeah.
For people like us, that's not simple.
No.
That's phenomenal. And then, how did you do at the national?
I got third overall.
That's like big.
So, if you haven't figured out, he's a bit modest. He set a record that, and me being new to Lyman Hall, but if you talk to anyone that's been around long enough, a record that no one actually ever thought would be broken again, which is tremendous. I cannot stand running. I only do it when I'm forced to in the military and/or, yes, or someone, my wife now, but someone's usually behind me. And really, what he's done is tremendous. I mean, to finish that high at the national level in a track meet, especially from New England, where we only get a good three or four months a year to actually run outdoors, is really remarkable.
Did you miss your graduation for that? I mean, were there? Okay, I didn't know.
So, he really is a remarkable young man, and outside of all his track accomplishments, he's just, he's just an outstanding Lyman Hall citizen. So, thank you for that, and he'll be running at Central Connecticut State University next year. So, please feel free to, feel free to go up and watch him run for Central.
And congratulations to your entire family, because when you have somebody committed to a sport that much, we know that it becomes a real family event and a family activity. So, congratulations. We are so proud of your accomplishment. And you had a little challenge this year, too, because you didn't really have a track. So, that was another minor challenge. So, you know, we appreciate your hard work and your support. The last presentation I'd like to make this evening is for someone who is having her last tonight, and it's my administrative assistant, Betty Napolitano. It's her last board meeting. She's retiring. She's going to the good life. And so, I just wanted to, Betty, could you come on over? Now, it's difficult, because Betty creates the agendas for these meetings. So, Roxanne's like, did you forget to put Betty on the agenda? I'm like, hello, I'm not going to put her on the agenda, she'll know. And then, she'll never let me live it down. So, we want to say, obviously, Betty, thank you so much for everything, your support to central office staff, myself personally, the Board of Education, for everything you've done. You've been the consummate professional, the incredible confidant. I never had to worry about having a confidential secretary, because you were that. And you always will be a friend. You'll always be a part of our family at central office. And again, we just wanted to say thank you very, very much for your efforts, and we want to make sure that the community understood everything that you do and how much we cherish what you've done for us personally and professionally.
Betty, I just want you to know, on behalf of the Board of Education, you know, I've said it to you before, it's hurting cats. You have nine personalities, and it's not an easy job. And she makes sure that we know exactly what to do, when to do it, how to do it, and she does it with kindness, professionalism, and she's always respectful, and we always know where we need to go. And on a personal level, I've said it to you many times, you taught me so much about how to run a meeting, about Robert's Rules, how to do things correctly, and I'll always, always think of you and how I've learned to run a meeting professionally, and that's through you and through your expertise. And you've led so many board members through so many transition times to become consummate board members, and I don't even know how many in your lifetime, that you've yet 10 boards. So, that's not, that's a lot of people. So, you deserve this retirement, and on behalf of the Board of Ed, we wish you a happy and healthy retirement. The most important thing is good health and enjoy your family. And thank you, thank you for all your years of service. It's very much appreciated.
So, unfortunately, you still have to go back and take minutes. I can't take that over right now. So, thank you all, and thank you to everyone in the audience for your indulgence of those great honors and presentations this evening.
Okay, though I know everybody is dying to stay for an entire board meeting, because our meetings are so riveting, but I'll give everybody like a minute or two. What are you giggling about over there? I'm teasing. I picked on you. I'll give you a couple of minutes. If anybody wants to leave, this would be a great opportunity. If you want to stay, we'd love to have you stay as well, but I'll give you that opportunity. Yeah, I was teasing. I agree. Okay, continuing along on board business, I would offer up, if there's anybody in the audience that has any questions of the Board of Ed. Anybody have any questions for the Board of Ed? Okay, I'm assuming there's no questions for the Board of Ed. With that, if I can get a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of department head, candidates for teaching positions, leave of absence, administrative positions, acceptance of retirement, and acceptance of resignation.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. We're in executive session. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
I have a, I have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, we're out of executive session. Thank you. Item seven is our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to accept consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.43?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Item eight, items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. So, moving forward, correspondence.
First, we have, we acknowledge a gift from Chick-fil-A, who provided breakfast and lunch for the Student Leadership Academy, and that was worth about $1,500. We thank them. We thank Nicholas Passarello from Travelers Insurance for binders that we received at a value of $765. We also received from Sterling Engelhardt McSquares. I'm not too familiar with this. C Squares.
MC Squares.
Oh, MC Squares. You can tell I'm not familiar. I come from a different, you know, era.
We'll get you the catalog.
If he started saying McSquares, then we know he eats where he eats on a regular basis. So, we're happy he's not saying McSquares.
Okay. And that gift is valued at $6,000. That's a great gift, from Sterling Engelhardt. Next, we received an iPad in case from Donors Choose to Cook Hill School, and that's valued at $670. Another iPad mini-case and interactive software from Donors Choice, Choose, rather, I'm sorry, to Cook Hill School, and that was valued at $735. Another to Cook Hill School iPad and outer box case, $569 value. We also received from Health Pass in New York, the CFO was Mr. Rudy Mealy, and they donated furniture and workstations, which were valued at $53,695. That was a very, that's more or less for our offices and whatnot, office furniture.
That's unbelievable.
Nice, very nice of them to do that. We also received a violin from Virginia Malte for Dag, and that was valued at $700. And she also gave one, another one to Dag, a viola, I'm sorry, valued at $1,000. Very happy to receive those things, and we thank those people for their generosity. We have a letter to the board from Mr. Newbauer thanking us for the support and the naming of the Mark T. Sheehan Baseball Field in his honor. We also received a note of thanks for showing of sympathy to a person who lost a family member. And then, we received about four letters from students who were part of the DECA class. We supported them going to Nashville to compete in the International Conference, and about four members thanked us for that.
Thank you very much. Item 10, our committee reports. We'll start with ACES representative. Karen?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. The ACES Governing Board met on June 9, 2016. The minutes of the previous meeting were accepted. The Governing Board approved the filing of the fiscal reports subject to audit and authorized the acceptance of resignations, confirmation of retirements, leaves of absence, and the hiring of staff, transfers, position changes, as detailed on the Human Resources Report. The monthly Early Head Start Report was approved. There was a presentation by the Community Foundation for Greater New Haven, an update on the International Programming Visa Application, information about school graduations and moving-up exercises, and the status of the Leader Hill Renovation and the ACES Foundation Grant Awards. The Governing Board approved the following program budgets for the 2016-2017 school year, central office, early childhood services, and operations. The Governing Board approved the E-Rate Resolution and the breakfast and lunch prices for the 2016-2017 school year. for the 2016-2017 school year. The Governing Board granted signing authority for state grants, contracts to the Executive Director or in his absence or incapacity, the Executive Director for Finance and Operations until September 9, 2016. Furthermore, the Governing Board approved entering into a contract with the State Department of Education to participate in one or more of the child nutrition programs. The Curriculum and Instruction Report was given by Erica Forte, the Assistant Executive Director. She indicated that evaluations and assessments were completed, including CTAA, and that curriculum development will occur over the summer. Policies for physical restraint and seclusion, as well as DCF reporting, were approved. Policies approved for a first read included food personnel code of conduct, professional standards for food service personnel, and equity and diversity. There was an extensive discussion regarding possible investment with the Community Foundation for Greater New Haven. However, the Governing Board indicated that more information needed to be sought on this issue before taking action. The Governing Board approved the ACES Professional Development Evaluation and Support Plan. The report of the Nominating Committee was presented, and the current slate of officers and the Executive Committee were elected to serve for 2016-2017. The Governing Board entered into executive session for the purpose of discussing the Executive Director's evaluation, salary agreement for the Executive Director, and action to extend the Executive Director's contract. The Governing Board voted to extend the Executive Director's contract and approved a salary agreement with a 4% increase and an increase in annuity. There are 101 Wallingford students attending ACES programs.
Thank you very much. Wintergreen Magnet School Steering Committee. No meeting? Yeah, okay. School to Career and Business Think Tank?
No meeting.
Yep, okay. PTAC update, are we kind of done for the summer?
Actually, I will give an update. We had a meeting prior to this on dress code, and we've come to consensus on a dress code that I'll be sharing for a policy review by the Board of Education in September, or excuse me, October. We'll be messaging that out to parents to hopefully have it adopted by the middle of the years, that the dress code will be in place for the spring in the warmer months, when dress code usually becomes more of a challenge.
I would imagine it does. Perfect, thank you. Lyman Hall Athletic Complex Improvement Committee. Is your mic on, Mark?
We have not met, but we have an update. The last Friday, we had a kickoff meeting for the track coding, and that's going on as we speak. They didn't work on it today with the bad weather forecast, but it should, they're actually a little ahead of their original schedule, which is a good thing.
Can I just ask a question about that? So, basically, the summer will be devoted to completing all components of that project? Is that true?
There will be the Phase Two portion, the 250,000. Some of that may go into next year, but it won't affect the use of the facility at all.
Right, so they'll be up and running, 100% for their athletic complex for the fall?
Absolutely.
Great. I'm sure they're excited about that. Plan of Conservation Development, I know that actually will be Pat Reynolds going forward, and I know there haven't been any meetings. I just submitted your name, just so that, you know, for record, and I believe they're looking to meet the end of July or August, so you'll hear from
Thank you.
...the appropriate individuals. Thank you for volunteering to do that, Pat. Food Service Strategic Plan Committee?
Nothing to report, other than I would like to say that we did make an agreement that we have Mr. Alan Belichick, who will be here as our interim director for this school year.
Okay.
So Alan's on board and is working to solidify bids through the Town Hall, working on the food, the healthy foods certification paperwork, and we're also going to be looking to hire a part-time nutritionist to assist in that area, as we had discussed, so I just wanted to bring everybody up to.
Great, thank you for that, Dr. Menso. Old business, I do not believe we have any. Instructional Committee. Amanda, you're up.
12.1, Board Consideration to Rescind the Non-Renewal of Teaching Contracts in the Wallingford Public Schools. Dr. Menso?
Thank you. This is the annual opportunity for me to read through the list of teachers that we unfortunately had to potentially put on notice of not receiving a job in the fall, but now are happy to say that they're able to return due to the fact that we're through the budget process. So, in my capacity as Superintendent of Schools, I recommend that the Wallingford Board of Education rescind the non-renewal of the teaching contracts of the named individuals on the rescinding non-renewal list, and that the Board of Education authorizes me to offer them contracts for full teaching, full-time teaching positions for the 2016-17 school year. So if you'll bear with me, I have to read through it, and Amanda gets the luck of not having to, because I will have previously read it. Lyman Hall, David Palmer, Patrick Kozlowski, Alan Riggs, Angel Santiago, Matthew Midow, Caitlin Koplick, Jeremy Walls, Samantha Ruttowitz, Jeffrey Horton, Jennifer Proco, Rebecca Rose, Vincent Testa, Mark T. Sheehan High School, Christina Bosina, Cynthia Frank, Joanne Renee, Amanda Gillis, Jason Sorensen, Erica Fercilius, Jamie Canny, Nicholas Chelmou, Mary Ellen Pettit, Melissa Zigmont, DAG Hammershol Middle School, Vanessa R. Amorall, Kathleen Moreno, George Paccakis, Audrey Valley Pasquett, Andrea Valley Pasquett, Kristin Robyn, Jessica Suarez, Tara Hill, Gianna Gerga, Genevieve Ivanoff, Amanda Lynn, Moran Middle School, Stephanie Sonstrom, Catherine Griesley, Corey Izzo, Michelle Wolfram, Jason Morosky, Lauren Hebert, Megan Perez, Moses Y. Beach, Tricia Ritchie, Tiffany Stossel, Grace Graminsky, Jamie Murphy, Kristin Nagel, Cook Hill Elementary School, Melissa Boyce, Megan Lemieux, Alexa Manella, Anna Marie O'Brien, Stefania Di Stefano, Elizabeth La Monica, Brittany O'Connell, Cassandra Savelli, sorry, I wanted to make that Savinelli, sorry, Cassandra. Highland Elementary School, Michael Green, Suzanne Sullivan, Emily Dehan, and Laura Galanti. Parker Farms Elementary School, Megan Robinson, Shelley Labrie, Julia Gregori, Carissa Legana. Pond Hill Elementary School, Jaclyn Valentine, Stephanie Skrow, Melissa Dorish. Rock Hill Elementary School, Mary Orzowski, and James Russell. Stevens Elementary School, Beth McLellan, Kristin Balsamo, Kathleen Flaherty, Paige Carter, Colleen Roden, Julie Young. Yalesville Elementary School, Eleanor Kirkpatrick, Rosalyn Salz, Karen Dunn. In the curriculum office, or in curriculum, Raquel Requena, Kristine Alt, Oxana Hudson, Elaine Sunt, Karen Campbell, Heather Erha, Charisma Nieves, Beth Rondo, Barbara Minutilo, Karen Rozowski. EEP or Alternative High School, Michael Lavoie, Tara Williams. Pupil Personnel, Emily Bannick, Chelsea Paletta, Brian Meglion, Aaron Berthold, Lindsay Kopec, Stephanie Lovato Bergum, Berghorn, Chelsea McLean, Kristin Weines, Catherine Davis, Mary Ann Casperson, Rebecca Miklis, Riley Taber, Jennifer Wolf, Christine Ferdignia, Penelope Bogonatz, Phyllis Christensen, Sebastian Lombardi, Dawn Morris, Wendy Rodriguez, Rashid Sofian, Tiffany Mehlhat, Robin Beecher. Special Area, Sarah Filahi, Julie French, Melissa Hernandez, Anthony Materisi.
Thank you. 12.2, Board Approval to Rescind the Non-Renewal of Teaching Contracts in the Wallingford Public Schools. I make a motion that the Board of Education rescind the non-renewal of the teaching contracts of the named individuals on the rescinding non-renewal list, and authorize the Superintendent of Schools to offer them contracts for full-time teaching positions for the 2016-17 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 12.3, Approval of Acceptance of Retirement. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the retirement of Linda Winters effective June 30, 2016. Linda Winters has been the Business Manager since August 1998.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. 12.4, Approval of Acceptance of Resignation. I make a motion that the Board of Education accept with regret the resignation of Nicholas Brophy, effective June 30, 2016. Nicholas Brophy has been the E.C. Stevens Elementary School Principal since July 2011.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.5, Approval of Acceptance of Leave of Absence. I make a motion that a leave of absence for during address will be approved without pay and in accordance with the provision of the current teacher's contract.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. 12.6, Approval of Appointment of Candidates to Teaching Positions. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following candidates to teaching positions for the 2016-17 school year, contingent upon proper Connecticut certification, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. PPS, School Psychologist, Sean Caviston. School Psychologist, Brianna Guido. Special Education, Maria De Palo, Paola. Mark T. Sheehan High School, Math, John Wadich. World Language, Paul De Pascal. English 1.0, Jasmine Karan. English 7, Catherine Bates.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.7, Approval of Appointment of Candidates to Administrative Positions. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the candidates to positions of administrator as of a mutually agreed-upon date, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. E.C. Stevens Elementary School Principal, Kristin Kylie. Adult Education Director, Sashi Govin. DAG Hammershol Middle School Principal, Todd Snyder.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
You could go with the motion, finish that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
If we may pause for a moment?
Sure.
Because we'd like to recognize Christina Kylie, who is here, if you want to come up, and congratulate Christina on being appointed the new principal of Stevens Elementary School. Christina? You're good. Christina presently is an interventionist at Moses Y. Beach Elementary School, so we're very fortunate to have someone who's coming up through the ranks. She's been an elementary teacher, pre-K teacher, well, pre-K II teacher in our district now for several years at a variety of schools in our district. She has been a leader in our school district in teacher evaluation, professional development. She was a semifinalist in the State Teacher of the Year a few years back. We are so pleased, so proud, to call her a new administrator in our district, a building-level administrator who's working hard, and it just shows that her hard work, her perseverance, her commitment to Wallingford truly is paying off at this point, and it's such a pleasure to be able to promote someone from within the district who has truly been such an incredible part of so much work in the recent years. So, I know that we're so pleased and so excited to have you as part of the team. I know the Board was extremely, extremely pleased with your interviews throughout the process, and every time, it got better and better, and we could just sit there for Mr. Vado to say he could sit there and listen to you all night, you know, that says a lot. But we wanted to say
You just don't want to listen to anybody.
Yeah. So, we wanted to say welcome and thank you for continuing your career on behalf of the children in Wallingford and with the children and professionals in Wallingford. Thank you so much. So I don't know if you want to comment?
I just want to say that I'm honored to continue, and I look forward to having a even bigger and more positive impact on an entire school community, so thank you for giving me the chance to do that. I'm truly
I just have to say one thing, Chris. I almost hit you the other day when you were running. And after I went by you, I said, "Oh, my God, principal, I'm going to kill her before she even gets the job."
I'm really glad it turned out differently.
It was twice, going and coming.
It was only going five miles an hour, so it would have been a long
Thank you.
Great. I also would like to comment on the appointment of Sashi Govin to the Director of Adult Education. We're very pleased that Sashi is willing to take on this new challenge in our district. Sashi has come to us, came to us three years ago. She has worked very hard at DAG Hammershol, and we're looking forward to her taking on this new challenge and this new opportunity with our adult education population. Mr. Flinter, who's been working and talking to Ms. Govin about this opportunity when it was discussed, and he is really also very pleased, and Mr. Flinter is a very, obviously, he's kind of like a proud father of that program. He believes that it needs to be left in the hands of someone who can nurture it and take it to the next level, and he believes Ms. Govin could do that. So we're very excited about her taking on that role. At the same time, we're very excited because Mr. Snyder has accepted the appointment of the new principal of DAG Hammershol Middle School. Mr. Snyder, Todd, has been the assistant principal at Lyman Hall for the past few years. Prior to that, he was at Sheehan High School. And again, it's another opportunity for us as a district to honor those who have been committed to our school district, who are here, working hard, stepping up, taking on the challenges, and also willing to grow with us as a district. We have a tremendous amount of capacity in our administrative team, and we have so many people that we hope will continue to stay with us so we can continue to give everyone opportunities like this that we're able to nurture and grow in tonight. Todd is one of those individuals that we're pleased to do that with in his role now, taking on the role at DAG Hammershol. Todd will now be part of the process of selecting a new assistant principal at DAG Hammershol because Mr. DePonte, as we all know, is moving on to a principalship in the southern part of the state, so we'll be able to meld the team together. We felt it was very important, since we had an administrator in district that we had confidence in stepping up at this time, to really put that person in place so that we could chart a course over the summer for DAG, because we felt that it was important to have a person who's been in our district, been part of the fabric of the community in that school as we move forward, to move towards the 2016-17 school year. I know Mr. Parker also wanted to comment, I think, and Ms. Levelle also did too.
So just on behalf of Todd, I want to say, I'm excited to have him join the team as the principal, because I think his, from my seat, his knowledge base of curriculum and instruction and assessment really are going to help that school move forward in the district. He's really immersed himself in mastery-based learning and what that structure needs to look like, so I'm confident that he can take the charge and lead that. So I'm glad to have you a part of the team, Todd.
And I actually wanted to take a moment to comment on a little bit of pride that I feel, because both Ms. Kylie and Mr. Snyder have worked very closely with me on the Teacher Evaluation Committee, and so I feel like I've watched them grow into leaders and watched Todd extend his leadership in the past year tremendously. Todd has taken a very, very careful stance in helping us align the mastery-based learning standards to the teaching standards as part of the teacher evaluation system, and I think that it's something that he's really going to bring to the table to help DAG students really get the maximum amount of success possible in their educational experience there. So I'm happy to welcome the both of them.
Congratulations again. Thank you.
My own? Oh, there you go. Congratulations to you both. As a future parent, it makes me proud to see, you know, people stepping up and, you know, having so much energy and being so involved with the students, so thank you. 12.9, Board Consideration of the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools Regarding the Termination of Employment of 21 Substitute Teachers in the Wallingford Public Schools as of the end of the 2015-16 school year.
Yes, and this is another annual opportunity that I have to read more names, but our names are, basically, this is part of our process and part of our policy. So I recommend that the Board of Education vote to terminate, as of the end of the 2015-16 school year, the employment of 21 substitute teachers in the Wallingford school system on the substitute teacher list, and that this list be included as part of the minutes of this board meeting. The recommendation is for the following reasons. Under the Teacher Tenure Law, Section 10-154
151.
...of the Connecticut State statute, the definition of teacher under the law includes any certified professional employee working for at least 90 days in such a teaching position. The specific substitute teachers I am recommending for termination fall within the definition of teacher. Under the Teacher Tenure Law, anyone who is a teacher becomes subject to the statute's provisions regarding the employment, non-renewal, and termination. Accordingly, it is necessary Accordingly, it is necessary that these teachers should have their employment concluded or terminated as of the completion of the 2015-16 school year so that they, so that we will be free to determine our needs and utilization of substitutes for the coming school year. This action should not affect our utilization of the services of the substitute teachers for the coming 2016-17 school year, consistent with our prior practices and policies. Finally, I also recommend that I be authorized and instructed to communicate notice of this action in writing to the individuals affected by this action and to respond for the Board of Education to any appropriate requests which may be forthcoming for them or their representative or as otherwise required. Those individuals include the following people. Scott Abrams. Michelle Connolly. Catherine Douglas. Jamie McDermott. Jean Mazafaro. Adrian Sparuzzi. Caitlin Tworog. Michelle Benini. Ellen Cooper. Allison Anuzi, Iainuzi, rather, excuse me. Caitlin Martin. Jenna Cragley-Roly. Sorry. It's, I can't, I'm like, I'm Italian and I have the hardest time with Italian names. It's horrible.
Little bad.
Sandra Stickler. Sandra Vissolente, Vissolat? Sorry. Autumn.
Craglio.
Craglio. Catherine DiAgostino. Deborah Claus Huskis. Tristan Mason. Jessica Simkes. Ashley Testa. And Zachary Vitale. And I apologize to anyone and everyone that I just got their name wrong. I truly apologize.
12.10.
Amanda, I expect you to read those now.
Board action regarding the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the employment of 21 substitute teachers. I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools regarding the termination of employment of the 21 substitute teachers in the Wallingford school system on the substitute teacher list and that this list be included as part of the minutes of this board meeting. And further move that the superintendent of schools be directed to communicate this action in writing to those individuals and that the superintendent of schools be authorized to respond on behalf of the Board of Education to any requests which may be forthcoming from them and/or their representative or as otherwise required.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.11. Approval of Board of Education's schedule of meetings for 2017 to 2018.
Is there a motion to approve the schedule?
Oh, sorry. I make a motion to approve Board of Education's schedule of meetings for 2017 to 2018.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 12.12. Discussion and approval of the 2016-2018 IDEA grant application. Do you have an update, Dr. Menzo?
This is our annual vote that the Board has to vote on approving the grant application for the IDEA grant that was submitted to the State Department a few weeks ago. The grant is written to support the goals of the department. This year, we're focusing on developing capacity to identify, assess, intervene for students with disabilities in the area of reading, as well as continuing to look at strengthening in-district programming, parent engagement, and service delivery within the least restrictive environment.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the 2016-2018 IDEA grant application.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Well done, Ms. Dorr. Thank you very much. Item 13, Operations Committee. Ms. Britter?
Thank you, Mrs. McKay. Our report on the Operations Committee from June 13th, we discussed at the Operations Committee the co-op of the boys' swimming for Lyman Hall with Coggin-Chalk High School, which was on the consent agenda, our cafeteria report, and our Board of Education report, which ended in a surplus, which we'll discuss in a little bit, some transfers appropriation, our normal transfer authority to the superintendent of schools, and further budget discussions, which again, we'll continue those discussions tonight. So that was our meeting. So item 13.2 is discussion and possible approval of naming of the Lyman Hall Athletic Complex. Dr. Menzo?
Yes, this came up at a meeting earlier in the school year, and there was additional requested information from the Board regarding this, and we had provided this to you a few months back. You reviewed it. The recommendation that I have shared with the Board is that, the recommendation that's on the table and that I believe the administration would support is the naming of the complex, the Mr. Philatotian Athletic Complex. We're not going to change the field's name because that was already dedicated, and we believe that we should not do that because we don't know enough about the family, and also, we don't want to take away an honor that was, obviously, at the time, there was a group of people who truly believed that honor belonged to that gentleman. So we don't want to take away the name of the athletic field itself, but we feel that we could also pay honor and tribute to a person who has had a contribution to the athletic department at Lyman Hall by naming the complex in his honor. So that's the recommendation that we believe, from an administrative standpoint, both at the building level and also at the district level, should be considered this evening.
Any discussion? I make a motion that we approve the naming of the Lyman Hall Athletic Complex, easy for me to say, the Lyman Hall Athletic Complex as recommended by the superintendent of schools. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Item 13.3. Discussion and possible approval for the use of $273,000 of the 2015-2016 unencumbered fund balance for curriculum, technology, furniture, PPS purchases prior to June 30, 2016.
This item is basically just to publicly have you vote on this topic. It could have gone to consent, but we wanted to make sure that, since it was an item discussed, we want to make sure that we follow protocols. You've already consented this in a prior meeting. It's just really a formality of getting the vote at this-
So I guess these next three items were discussed-
Correct.
-at our prior Operations Committee meeting. It's more of a formality-
Correct.
...of formal approval for the agenda.
Thank you.
So I make a motion that we approve the use of $273,000 of the 2015-2016 unencumbered fund balance for curriculum, technology, furniture, and PPS purchases prior to June 30, 2016.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item 13.4. Discussion and possible approval for the use of $321,000 of the 2015-2016 unencumbered fund balance for maintenance items after the 2015-2016 fiscal year-end close from the 1% account. Dr. Menzo? Same thing?
Same exact thing.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. I make a motion to approve the use of $321,000 of the 2015-2016 unencumbered fund balance for maintenance items after the 2015-2016 fiscal year-end close from the 1% account.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Final one. I make a motion that we approve to accept the changes to the 2016-2017 budget as presented in our prior Operations Committee meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Item 14, New Business. I do not believe we have any at this time. Item 15, Administration Report. Dr. Menzo?
Yes, just some quick things. First of all, obviously, this is our last meeting of the official school year, but we will still be meeting in July. I believe the date is July 25th, so we'll have that meeting. I do want to bring people's attention to a variety of things. First of all, just to clarify any confusion, that we do have, again, this year, on August 29th, the drop-in to meet teachers at all schools from 8:00 to 9:30 in the morning, like we did last year. That is not open house. That is not in replace of open house. That is a drop-in that is not replacing open house. Open house, also, we've been trying to, because we had feedback from teachers and administrators' parents, to not have open house be the first week of school because it's so right behind this, so we've tried to stagger those dates. The open house schedule should be coming out no later than the end of July. We're working to make sure that we accommodate Jewish holidays and a variety of events at schools, so we're still finalizing that calendar. But again, the idea is that the August 29th is from 8:00 to 9:30 at all schools. It's an opportunity to meet the teacher, but it is not the open house. There'll be a separate open house. The first day of school is August 30th, which we'll talk about more, but I just figured I'd throw that one out there. Convocation this year for Board members and community members is actually on the 29th. We're doing it on the last day of the three days. We're going to close with convocation at Lyman Hall in the afternoon from 12:00 to 1:30, followed by an ice cream social for staff because we figured, we keep getting feedback that teachers want the first day back. They'd rather go right to their classroom and set up their classrooms and spend time, so we're going to give them on the week, the Thursday prior, the two hours in their classrooms, get them focused on doing what they need so that they can get their classrooms going, and then they'll have a day and a half of professional development on Thursday and Friday, and then on Monday, they'll have the meet and greet with parents, followed by building-based faculty meetings, followed by lunch, and then come to convocation, and then the ice cream social, and then start the new school year. So we really felt that this was a way of trying to listen to the teachers' concerns about the need to be in their classrooms right away, so they felt that they would be prepared for the parents on Monday.
Dr. Menzo, did you say the first day of school is the 30th?
Correct.
Wow.
Tuesday, the 30th.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We had good news last Friday that the grant that Ms. Vayou, who's on vacation tonight, and one of her staff members wrote to Frontier Communications for a new sound system for the Board of Education for our committee meetings, was granted. So we received a little over $12,000. That will go into furnishing our new boardroom, our board, committee boardroom over at 100 South Turnpike, so we will have much better sound in that environment. So we're very excited. We really are pleased that we were able to get that grant, and we, of course, thank Frontier Communications, which we will be putting together a gift form to start the new year. Today, we had a full day, starting at 8:30, that went till about quarter to 3, developing and drafting the first layer of the Wallingford Promise. We had nearly 30 community and staff, and most importantly, student volunteers. The largest group represented today were the students, which was great, or was the students, rather. They were not shy. They were very, very confident in presenting their ideas, very respectful. They truly set the course and set the standard for the day. It was truly invigorating to be with them, and so we're very excited. We got a tremendous amount of work done today. Incredible amount of work completed today. So what we're going to be doing is putting it into a Google Doc, sending it out to everybody who was there today to vet it, and then we will be starting the vetting process in the fall with all the different constituent groups, including the Board of Education. So we're very pleased with the hard work of our students and our staff and our parents and our community members. Community members, we had, we actually had so many community liaisons that we had to divide the group into two. So we were able to get the different voices. Mr. Mancusi helped with one group. Ms. Lovell had teachers and administrators and paraeducators. Mr. Parker's worked with the parents. Ms. Isles worked with the students, and I worked with the other community group. So it was a phenomenal opportunity, and we were very fortunate to have the hubcap as a space to do this in because it's really a great place to be able to spread out and work. And we also had the advantage of having Ms. Landau there as a community participant, so she was able to give her input, too. So that's where we stand right now. We have, obviously, a lot of new additions to our administrative team. We will have, throughout the summer, meet and greets at the schools, so we will set up times like we've done in the past when we've had summer administrative hires, so we'll make sure that there's a time, then we will do email blasts to those families that have children in the school or going into the school to make sure that it's not happening on the first day of August 29th, that that's the first time they meet the new principal. So we'll do that for Ms. Kylie. We'll do that for Mr. Snyder. And then as we move forward, we still have to appoint the Parker Farms principal, and now we have two assistant principalships that we'll be looking to complete the group with. So that's what I have, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 16, our announcements. I don't believe we have any. And 17, date of our next meeting is Monday, July 25th. We do not meet for curriculum or operations through the summer, so we only do our televised meetings in July and August. So our televised Board of Education meeting will be July 25th here at the Robert Perry City Town Council chambers at 7:00 PM, excuse me. And unless anybody has anything else for the good of the order, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.